Welcome, everyone, to your city council meeting of March 21st, 2023, 6:00 PM here in city council chambers. We're going to start with our pledge of the flag. I'm going to ask our city treasurer, Tim Nillgren, to lead us.
Can I remember?
Can you place your hand over your right heart or your right hand over your left?
Oh, that would do that.
I have two.
And my pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Haworth.
Here.
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Napolitano.
Here. One last time under that title, but appreciate everyone being here. I do want to announce a couple of folks here. You'll hear from some. Others will be announced, but I do always want to recognize our former mayors that are here. We've got former Mayor Hildy Stern, Russ Lesser up there in the back, of course, Tim Nillgren, our city treasurer, is also a former mayor. Bob Holmes, I think RSVP. Dwayne Powell, I see you, Wayne. Tim Nillgren, oh, I already said that. Mitch Ward and Linda Wilson. Linda, good to see you again. Welcome, everyone. And that takes us to approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances. So if there's nothing we're going to pull from the consent calendar later under Mayor Montgomery, then say, speak now or forever hold. Do we have a motion?
I don't think they...
I think you gotta press this first. That's good.
I'll make the motion. I don't believe they have an interactive screen.
All right. You make...
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Lesser, seconded by Councilmember Haworth. We'll do a voice vote.
Oh, no.
Oh, we got it. Sorry. Here we go. Buttons.
I see my button, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero.
I don't want to literally be in the middle of that.
And that takes us to our reorganization, city reorganization. And this is where I hand it over to MPT, Mayor Pro-Tim Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me grab the actual microphone.
Well, gentlemen, I've been wondering why we're all wearing the same sweater.
Oh, yes. So apparently, I've taken to wearing sweaters over this winter, and I seem to need to buy a whole lot more than the ones I have. So argyle seems to be a running theme that I have. And so my colleagues here have indulged my fondness for argyle sweaters and city attorney and city manager, too. So thank you all for your support in so many ways.
Before I present Mayor Napolitano with our ceremonial gavel, you don't have to stand yet. I'll save it for later. You've got time. I'll save that for later. I want to read a couple of things. And just I thought about this when, remember when Steve took over as the mayor last year, we were still under the governor's emergency order. We all remember that, right? Waiting for that day was going to release itself. And I knew Steve was the right person for that job, because once you have that order lifted, you want to go back to our path to normalcy. So Steve, you were that guy to lead us back out of that governor's order to path to normalcy. Not just onion decks, but the mood of the city itself changed. You did it with strength when needed and compassion, the holy kind you were mayor. And I remember that. So I think everybody here in the city remembers that. There were a lot of tough times going through. We're actually coming out of the break in the clouds here, literally. So for me, it was a matter of thanking you for your constant friendship, mentoring, and leading us through the darkest, one of the darkest times in our city, and turning the reins over at the right time for the right person. Thank you for all you've done for the city. And with that, it says, I should have said, "Mayor Emeritus," but I'll get to that later. It says, "Simple service, Mayor Steve Napolitano, June 7th, 2022 to March 21st, 2023, on behalf of grateful city and its residents." Congratulations. And going to call up next, Councilmember Joe Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim. Mayor Napolitano.
Councilmember Franklin.
So I have the honor to present, how do you do this? I mean, you got like, you need three hands. So from the city of Manhattan Beach, certificate of commendation to our colleague, Mayor Steve Napolitano, from, oh, yes, so from July 7th, 2022 until today, March 21st. So whereas Steve Napolitano served the city of Manhattan Beach as mayor from June 7th to March 21st, 2023, and during his tenure as mayor, Steve has exercised leadership in establishing the professional precepts.
Wow.
I mean, wow. Thesaurus, please, of the position of mayor, has possessed the outstanding qualities of integrity and selfishness, concern and devotion, has truly been an asset to his colleagues, I'll vouch for that, and has benefited the citizens of Manhattan Beach immensely. And whereas it is the desire of the city council that Steve be commended for his loyal dedication and achievements as mayor on behalf of the citizens of the community, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Manhattan Beach, California, does commend with deep appreciation outgoing Mayor Steve Napolitano for his outstanding contributions to the community as mayor and as a member of the city council, and I'll add, as a friend. Congratulations.
Councilman Haworth.
Thank you, MPT, for a few more moments. Mr. Mayor, I need to correct you one last time. We have former Mayor Linda Wilson and Mitch Ward with us now. They weren't here when you introduced them earlier. So it's only appropriate that I correct you, don't you think? Okay. You're not just a style leader.
Never been accused of that.
Well, you have. So, and before I make the comments about you, and they are brief, because I know how you appreciate that, I do want to say, this, we want to give you the honor and appreciation that you so deserve. And it's sort of strange, right? Because we don't also say, and, you know, good luck to you, Richard. You know, we just all sit down, he makes a speech, then you make a speech. And I just want to say, I just hope that this next term for you does not, one week in, usher in a pandemic. You know, I know how much you love serving our community, and you always show up, which is harder than it looks. And I so appreciate and look forward to you being mayor. But back to Steve. No, listen, there's a lot that could be said. And, see, I am so grateful for your leadership, and I think the whole community is. You make it look easy to somehow be funny, somehow be rational, somehow be inclusive. All of the things you do, you do with a smile on your face, mostly. And when you are cranky, it's for a reason that actually moves us forward. Maybe cranky is the wrong word. I think when you are strong in your statements, I appreciate that, too. And I feel like I've learned a lot watching you just from November to now. I can't say enough how grateful we all are. Your experience has just helped this city so much. You know, I won't be pushing your buttons anymore. I'll be pushing Richard's buttons. But I do have something. This is sort of, it's from all of us in recognition of your experience for the past nine months, but also, you can open it. It's experience over the nine months and all the service you have given to the community. You often say it. So...
Is this a martini glass?
No, that's for later. Politicians aren't supposed to be shown with that. You know, I don't want to do that to you. It's a trophy.
Everyone gets a trophy?
No, no, look at it.
This ain't my first rodeo.
Don't worry, Richard and David, I thought you were busy at a time as well. Thank you for your incredible leadership and your friendship. Can I? MPT.
Thank you. Councilmember David Lesser.
One of the things that Steve dislikes more than anything is ongoing praise. So I'm going to continue in that spirit. And simply note, the trophy is appropriate. This ain't his first rodeo. I think this is your sixth tour as mayor. Is that right? You've been a public servant for our community for, is it 31 years, including the roughly 12 years that you spent with our supervisor's office?
You're old.
You are old. But moreover, it's what you've done while serving all those years for our community. And it's consequential things that he's contributed to our community, including in his last tour as mayor. Our public facilities, our police-fire facility, Metlocks Plaza, our library, I was there. You have made a huge difference, including this last weekend. I would say this, Steve, we don't always agree. You're not going anywhere. I look forward to further disagreements. But I always know that you have the best interests of the community at heart. And for that, I am eternally grateful as a resident to be represented by you. And I appreciate your friendship. So thank you. Thank you for this last really difficult period of service. Lots going on in our community. I don't need to summarize it here, but thank you.
Before we begin the Mayor Napolitano's speech, I'd like to ask anybody else who'd like to, on behalf, did it Terry's in the room? Want to come down and give the mayor rewards, awards, hugs? If you don't mind, just tell us who you are and who you represent. We'll start with you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jessalyn Waldron. I work for Supervisor Holly Mitchell. I represent her on the coastal areas of the Second District for LA County. And Manhattan Beach is only a little over a year new to the Second District when they redrew the boundaries of the district. And in my work in the South Bay, I have to say, Mayor Napolitano, I've had so many people from your service in the county say, well, I just called Steve and it got done. You have a lot of fans out there outside of Manhattan Beach, and it was very clear to me in your State of the City how much you've done in this term of your mayorship. And your dedication and passion to your community is noted by Supervisor Mitchell. So we have, she sent me to present you a scroll, uh-huh, in recognition of dedication of service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefits of all residents of LA County on behalf of Supervisor Mitchell. Very welcome.
Hello. I'm Vanessa Poster. I'm the president of the Board of the Beach Cities Health District. And I want to say, when we started in public service, both of us had less gray hair. So, yeah. So I'm going to read ours. Whereas Beach Cities Health District enhances individual and community health through a broad range of innovative health services, community-based programs, and collaborative partnerships with local organizations, municipalities, and elected officials, including the city of Manhattan Beach. Whereas Steve Napolitano has dedicated his time, energy, and civic service, and has been an integral partner in health of Beach Cities Health District through his active participation in a range of community health efforts and programs, including the role of mayor of Manhattan Beach. Whereas Steve has dedicated himself to serving Manhattan Beach and its residents, he will be long remembered by citizens, officials, and employees throughout the Beach Cities. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Beach Cities Health District Board of Directors on behalf of the entire organization, hereby issues this proclamation to Steve Napolitano in recognition of his contributions to serving its residents, as well as the demonstrated commitment to helping create a healthy beach community. And I also wanted to say, I was unable to attend on Saturday because it was rescheduled because of all this rain. And good to have a nice sunny day in the middle there at the Bruce's Beach Park dedication. And the city, with your involvement and leadership, has been brave to open its eyes to our racist past and continue to find ways to become more inclusive. Your words were an important part of that process. And I really, personally, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
One second. Hermosa Beach?
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, there we go. My name's Dean Francois. I'm a city council member in Hermosa Beach. I have Rob Seaman with me as well. And it's great to see you, Steve. I've known him a long time for many of the community, things we've been involved with for so many, many years. And of course, you know, we in Hermosa think he lives there. I don't know. We see him all the time playing volleyball. That's okay. All right. I still tell, no, he's a mayor. No, he's not. Really? Okay. Anyway. So, you know, basically, I've got this wonderful certificate of recognition for you because of your June 7th to March 21st. Okay. You earned it. Yeah. You were mayor then. Okay. Whereas you did all that, and most importantly, the cities of Hermosa and Manhattan Beach have a partnership and a commitment to working together for those shared values. And that's really important for us to relate to that and the leadership that you've shown, the things you've been through, and of course, the Bruce's Beach and dealing with that and what we ended up with last weekend in the park with the dedication of that. So therefore, I, well, Dean Francois, city council member, on behalf of our mayor, Raymond Jackson, and the whole city council, hereby tender this certificate of recognition to the honorable Steve Napolitano. With our, I can't read this writing. It's like, it's in Old English. "Oh sincerest appreciation and thanks for his distinguished service to the South Bay." Thank you so much.
That's great. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Nicole Jones. I'm here representing State Controller Malia Cohen. I bring you greetings from her from Sacramento. She asked me to bring this certificate to acknowledge all of your work as a Manhattan Beach City Council member, including serving as the youngest council member ever, as well as all of your work on Bruce's Beach Task Force. So in deep appreciation for your efforts to uplift communities in Southern California, she offers congratulations on this occasion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If I could, a point of privilege, I want to also bring greetings to the new mayor, elect now mayor. The controller offers her congratulations to you as you embark on this new role and acknowledges all of your commitment and service to the community.
Your Honor, Your Honor, Your Honor. And there are a few things here for both Richard and I, from city of Rancho Palos Verdes, city of Rolling Hills, the district attorney's office, which again, just brings a smile to my face. The U.S. Senate and Congressman Lou. So appreciate all those as well. Thank you very much. Wait, there's more.
Supervisor Mitchell also sent me with a congratulations. You haven't been sworn in yet officially. Is it fine? Supervisor Mitchell also sent me for a scroll to congratulate you on your mayorship and is eager to partner with you and work with you. Sorry, I should probably just read it real quick. It's short. "With sincere congratulations and best wishes, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles does hereby join in your celebration today." You're very welcome. Thank you for letting me come back down here.
All right. Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Well, I don't know when the whole mayor rotation, when it did this years ago, nobody showed up to it. It was just us. And I really appreciate, always do, whenever we do this and the former mayors come down. I really appreciate that. And of course, all the representatives, your friends. And it really means a lot that you came here from south of the border, from Hermosa and parts elsewhere, the county and everyone else. You're all friends. We cross paths. We work together many times. It's a, I really appreciate it because it means a lot. It means a lot. As Amy said, showing up means a lot. Just a few comments from me. You know, nine months ago, I said it was good to be the mayor, and it's been just that. There have been highs and lows, challenges and opportunities, but also lots of fun and laughs, hence the argyle sweaters, while also getting a lot of stuff done. I'm not going to go over a laundry list of everything we've done, not just because I can't remember what I did an hour ago, but because long list makes for really boring speeches. So if you really want to know and can't sleep sometime, I hear we just posted the State of the City video online. So enjoy. I do need to thank some folks, though. Nobody does anything alone. And that certainly goes for being mayor and serving on council. You need support. And I've got an amazing network who have provided me with the time, understanding, and space to do what I have needed to do, because they know and understand it isn't about me, it's about serving the community and serving others. I signed up for this. They didn't, but they've made it possible. Roman, Nola, my kids, Francie, of course, Jasmine, Mila, my mom, my brother, Jason, Eva, Taj, these are the people that are my rocks and keep me going, and so many more. I've got an amazing network of friends as well who keep me grounded in more ways than one. And they remind me about that on a constant basis, too. I've missed school events, booked lunch events, holidays, birthdays, and just everyday things, and yet they still talk to me. Like I said, they're amazing. Speaking of amazing, our city staff is the best in the business. Despite my best efforts to the contrary, they made me look good at all the events as a mayor has to do. The videos, the press releases, and following up on issues as they came up. Instead of naming a lot of names, I'll just give you an example. And that is last Thursday. I got a last-minute text by someone here in the community who said, hey, you know, my father is turning 100. And in some communities, they do drive-by with police or fire. Is there anything you guys can do? And so I sent out the email to Bruce and the chiefs and to city staff and said, we've got a 100-year-old war hero. He was in World War II. He's a bona fide hero with medals and all, and has shown up at our veterans' event every November 11th. And so I put the word out to staff, and they made it happen. And in the most amazing way. It was just, they showed up to the house, they did a drive-by, the police, the fire, together. They presented, I was able to sign, I couldn't go there because of the State of the City, but I was able to sign a certificate. It was presented by Andy Harrod, the entire neighborhood. They blocked off the street, the entire neighborhood had come out, the kids, the neighbors, everyone's filming. And it really touched the family, of course, but it touched him. And so it's just public record, things like that that staff does day in, day out, that nobody hears about. And they just do fantastic work. So appreciate that, all that you guys do. Please give them a round of applause. They're the heroes of this city. And while it's good to be the mayor, it's good that everyone gets a chance to do it, too. I believe very firmly in our traditional mayoral rotation every nine months, where everyone gets a turn and nobody gets too big ahead about it. I want to congratulate my friend and colleague, Richard, who will be taking the gavel. I know this city will be in great hands because of his state leadership. It has been before, and it will be again. And I look forward to continuing to work with him and my other colleagues. We've been very lucky to have a new council with some old, I mean, experienced hands.
What did you say?
We've hit the ground, we've hit the ground running since day one. It's a pleasure to work with them, as well as with Joe and Richard. And we just all, we all put Manhattan Beach first. And this is, there's no better group to work with than the folks I'm up here with now. So as my sixth term as mayor comes to an end, I want to especially thank the people of Manhattan Beach, though. I couldn't be more proud to serve my hometown. It's an honor that never gets old. My appreciation for this opportunity has only grown since I was first elected. I love Manhattan Beach. Manhattan Beach is my home, and I will always do my best for it and for everyone in it, always. Now let's get back to getting things done. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that very much. Thank you. And now, I would like to nominate Mayor Pro-Tim Richard Montgomery to be the next mayor of Manhattan Beach.
I'll second it. I don't see a voting screen.
We're going to bring him up right now. All right. There we go.
Motion passes five zero.
I turn it over to you, my friend.
So going forward, all complaints go to rmontgomery@manhattanbeach.gov. Take it away. Thank you. I have my email by now, I'm sure. Thank you, everyone. First of all, most of you know in this room, those who are watching at home, I'm not much for long-winded speeches. We've seen them for years, and it's one thing I detest. But tonight, I'm going to ask for your indulgence and your patience, as I break my very own three-minute rule as we go forward here. I'm a firm believer, Prime Minister Mitch Ward's my favorite quote from Mitch. It says, "Be sincere, be brief, and be seated." So two of the three, we're almost there. First, thank my colleagues, Mayor Napolitano, Joe, Amy, and David. Yes, who worked before in the past, and Joe now, two and a half years, three and a half years into it, you have an exceptional team here. You don't see much of what happens. You see the meetings, you see the events at Bruce's Beach, you see a few things. There's so much more that happens. But you have people that are solid behind us. And as Steve mentioned, nothing happens here by itself. The mayor can sit here, but it's a team effort all the way through, with staff, everyone else. But I'll get into that. My family watching from home, I know they couldn't all be here, but my mom, hi, Mom, she's watching there. My dad, brothers and sisters in Texas, my brother, Terry, it's his birthday. Happy birthday. My wife, Diane, she could not be here from the hospital in time, but she texted me, says, "On my way." But I told her the excuse was, "It's a dark and stormy night, so it's okay to not be here early." Only other mayors understand, and four of you have been there. Other mayors understand what it's like to be mayor. It's not just the job. It's an incredible amount of time and attention it takes to do it right. To our residents and my friends that made this all possible, too many to name, as Mitch Seabrook mentioned, but especially Dennis here, Kim, David K., Elaine, the late David White. Thank you all. It means a lot. And you're the ones that put me here. So I never forget that. Position of mayor is both truly humbling and can be incredibly overwhelming. And if anyone thought we knew what would happen in 2020, we did not. Yes, we signed up for it. But no one saw this coming. No one had any idea. Our city clerks, Martha and Lisa, informing that I now join the shortlist of five people that have served four terms or more as mayor. Of course, no one is ever going to catch Mayor Napolitano in serving six terms. When you get elected when you're 22 years old, as he did, you get a big head start. Second, I was asked by many, what my priorities would be in my fourth term as mayor. Let's see. In 2008, we had the Great Recession, not a great start. Second term, 2012, city centennial, that was cool, right? Once you got the board named, that was good. Third term, 2020 COVID. So if you knew residents, I took over 12 days as mayor before the governor shut down the entire state and closed our beaches. That was March 19, 2020, those who remember that date. Ironically, that was three years and two days ago from today. Three years and two days. First time I've sat, and we'll be sitting in your chair. I never sat in that chair for any meetings as mayor the entire term. We had three meetings a week. Remember that? Three meetings a week. I know that Steve does. Prime Mayor Nancy Hersman does. First time in city history, and hoping that would be repeated. All meetings by Zoom, even though many of us had no idea what Zoom was. Unfortunately, we all do, and our school kids know what it is better than we do. I'm bringing this up for two main reasons. First, I never had opportunity, there was so much going on, mayor's rotation in 2020. I never had a chance to thank so many of you in this room and watching at home for all you did for all of us during COVID. We never had a proper chance to say thank you. Michael Greenberg, I mentioned a few, for his continued unsung generosity and pain to board up our downtown businesses as protection against looting, a site I also never want to see again. To the many doctors and nurses who once solicited, provided me a constant sounding board for what's going on on the medical side. You don't see on CNN. There's so much more happening. Our businesses, Mike Sims and my existence also were great. And yes, the Chinese consulate here in LA provided thousands of sterile masks and gloves and gowns and hand sanitizer, sanitizer, excuse me, that we could not find. And we're bidding against other cities trying to buy it. You couldn't find it anywhere. People came through and helped us out. Our police and fire personnel who could not stay at home, protecting all of us. And our entire staff, Bruce, Steve, your entire team, they remained working with us through it all. No one left during that time period. And our former LA County Supervisor, Janice Hahn, who stood with us and sending sheriffs to help protect us when needed. to help protect us when needed and joining us to inform the Governor Newsom that we were opening up our retail stores. So the term as mayor, some mayors will face a crisis during their term. During COVID, I was fortunate to have family, colleagues, staff and faith by my side during this last crisis. And you know how we managed all these past crises and the worldwide pandemic? The experience as mayor and our staff in recession prepared us for the worldwide pandemic 12-years later as much as anything could. The fact that we all worked together in a very stressful situation involving a major loss of revenue, employee cutbacks, threats to our financial security, it created a real team. Bruce and he, all of us that was here remember those days and we had no idea what would come down the road at us 12-years later. Because of all these past experiences and this current council has 54-years of council experience together, 54-years. So I'm not worried about whatever comes our way because we have the best experienced team, council, staff, and the city in California. This staff, they believe and practice service above self in the entire council, which is the principal motto of our Manhattan Beach Rotary Club and all Rotarians, service above self. I know because Bruce or Chief Johnson or Public Service Director legal email 11:30 at night, they're working still. You don't see that from your side of defense, but we know, we're the ones who the emails and the calls. Now onto the game plan for my term. First, continue to support our public safety departments. As the mayor mentioned, with the funds previously dedicated for seven more police officers and three more firefighters, it will make us stronger. Second, our success story in the homeless campaign. Those of you that wonder what happened, from 41 unhoused in 2018 to nine unhoused in 2022, a total team effort from our own assistant city manager, George Gabriel over here, to the hired contractors at Harbor Interfaith, our police and fire departments, to the volunteers and numerous co-founders at MB Safe, and finally again, the supervisor Janice Hahn, who provided over $300,000 to jumpstart this program for us in the beat cities. The success of what happened here, folks, should be a blueprint for every California city to follow. Why it is not, I don't understand, but the governor's focus remains on large cities. If he comes back here for the next visit, I will show him what you all have accomplished, George and your team and Bruce, everyone, they should follow exactly what we did and they can recreate it on a larger scale. And then here's my most important, to start back with courtesy. We all seem to have lost patience along with civility and basic courtesy in and after COVID, especially in public meetings. And our actions between the public and city staff via angry phone calls and demeaning emails, I know we've seen them. I'm informing everyone that attends the council meeting to interact with city staff to follow four basic rules of courtesy from now on. Sounds easy. Number one, please turn off your phone, please turn your phone off or place it inside at when it's city hall. A basic request posted on our signs outside this room, but too many forget to do it. It's disruptive and causes us all to stop city business. Number two, if you have to talk, please step outside. We have a small room here, folks, and we can hear everything you say from the dais. Number three, speak at the microphone, not from your seat. I need to explain this one to you. Everyone get a chance to speak at the microphone if you choose. Number four, when you interact with city staff, please be courteous. They will help you as soon as they can. Demeaning emails and calls do not speed up resolution on your issue. Orders calling council to let them know that you have a problem somewhere, email us, but be courteous in replies to council. Bring them on you back, you're talking to us. When you're talking to Bruce and staff, you're talking to me. However, city council is not exempt from blame either. I know councils also lost focus and not exhibited basic courtesy and civility in the past four years. I can tell you, those days are over. Yes, I may ask Councilor Hoaworth to hold her comments and push her button to speak because she's so passionate about her job, but respectfully, but we're bringing mutual respect and civility back to this dais. It's been too long. No more interruptions when another councillor is speaking or talking over them. We need to be respectful of the dais first and set an example for our residents to see and hear, no excuses. I'm asking my colleagues also abstain from any speeches about political parties, our opinions about a president, or district attorney, or Sacramento politicians, or declaring MB as a sanctuary city or anything outside of our direct control. As I said before, our only party and commitment should be the city of Manhattan Beach. We need to take care of our own backyard. Number good news, Martha. I can't see it, turn around. All right, look at that picture up there.
Oh my God.
So I'm presenting former Mayor Napolitano with his own passport, traveling around the world, that's a picture, what are you, 22-years-old in that picture?
26.
26-years-old, there you go, my friend.
Oh my God.
Thank you.
Is that a baby passport?
No, it's a regular passport.
I don't even remember it anymore.
You can travel to Hermosa and back now.
No more border stops.
But speaking of baby passports, I'm bringing back the much-loved and happy baby passports that applies to any baby born in the city from 2019 forward. I am very aware that we have many new residents that want this very unique passport made as possible by our city clerks, Lisa and Martha, and graphic artist, Kristen. Please contact me if you would like one or twins. And here's the next one, this is called the Reach Manhattan Beach, oh, that's all right, it's probably between, there we go. It's a free app, folks, and allows anyone to report a pothole, my personal favorite, I know Director Lee's happy with that, or a downed power line or a fallen tree graffiti. And it only goes directly to the appropriate department, but also provides a tracking number. So we have proof that we received it and you have proof we received it. Please use it before contacting council, it's the only delay of the service request. Email us, I send it right back to Director Lee. So all you're doing is kind of on the middle end, go right to Director Lee yourself with the Reach app, he can see it faster than I can. Social media, folks do not rely on social media, not sponsored by the city, for any factual information regarding the city in any way. I won't mention any names next door, but others are usually false information, but I've called many times a cesspool of misinformation. You have questions, email us, email Bruce, our city manager, email. God forbid you actually pick up the phone and call us. We answer phone and email. Text emergency, but other than that, use our email, use our phone lines. And also, this is important, when you see a crime occurring, call 911 immediately instead of posting on next door. Strange is sound, this has happened more than five times since COVID. So also, not sure if you noticed it, but our downtown streets have been returned to pre-COVID conditions, wide open. However, we'll begin a new task force next month to discuss, this is a resident-driven task force, not council, to discuss the possibility of long-term permanent dining decks with every meeting open to the public and a highly encouraged citywide participation. I know Jim Burton will be there. And a shout-out, I promised someone in the entertainment business I'd do this. A shout-out to our very own MBS media campus for being the home to Director James Cameron and his Academy Award winner Avatar, The Way of the Water, another watching, so I shed it. In closing, please walk, shop, dine, recreate and enjoy Manhattan Beach as everyone is welcome here. I consider myself blessed to have lived here for the past 35-years and ask God to continue to bless the city of Manhattan Beach and God bless the United States of America. Thank you all for being here. Oh, I was reminded, I forgot one. During the COVID, we didn't have an actual coffee with the mayor, we did coffee with the mayor via Zoom and thanks to Lisa, Martha and George, we made it happen because you'd be surprised at questions you'd get asked at a coffee. It was amazing. There's a way to stay in contact with us, there was no staff, it was just you and me talking and those are things, a dumb question, ask whatever you'd like. So we're gonna start it again, coffee with the mayor, east side and west side, yes, Steve, there's life east of Pacific Coast Highway. So April 4th, peach coffee here downtown, April 25th, coffee bean and tea leaf, Manhattan Village Shopping Center. So you'll see it there and bring on your questions, we go from there. With that, I turn it over, Your Honor, to, oh.
Mr. Mayor, I've made a motion. First, I feel like I do need to clarify one thing, I'm not dying, I'm just moving that seat over there. The other thing is I would like to nominate Councilman Franklin to be Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, and I make that motion.
And I second it.
Voting screen, there you go.
And I get to vote on that, right?
Unless you want to vote no or ruckus or...
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, colleagues. I get 15-minutes?
That was a mayor misprint, five minutes.
Hot dang. No, so I want to thank former Mayor Napolitano, or still, when will the moment?
It has been now.
But I want to thank Steve and Mayor Richard Montgomery and my council colleagues, council members Hoaworth and Lesser for their vote this evening to appoint me pro tem, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate their confidence in me, to perform the mayor pro tem duties and look forward to working with all of them to best serve the residents of Manhattan Beach. I owe debt of gratitude to Mayor Montgomery. I met Richard over 20-years ago, well, wait a minute, everybody met Richard 20-years ago. But I think it might have even been longer and you asked me to help your campaign, I can't remember which one it was, something in the mid-2000s. And I learned a great deal from that experience. I learned about caring for the residents, going out and meeting them, the importance of showing up, the importance of being there, bringing experience and wisdom, you know, to the dais right here. So I also saw how the city council and city work from that experience, because I think you appointed me to a couple of committees. And I'm grateful for our excellent and experienced staff and public safety personnel as well. Serving on council is humbling, an honor, a privilege and a joy for which I will always be grateful. So I am pleased and look forward to help you, Richard, in any way and my fellow council members in any way that I can as Mayor Pro Tem. So thank you all very much.
So what we're gonna do, folks, is we're gonna take a little brief little recess and I want all the former mayors to come down here for our mayor's picture and we'll see you after this is over and hopefully very soon. Thank you all very much.[1322.16] Thank you all very much.[122.17]
Your life, Mr. Mayor.
Look, everybody, welcome back. We're going to recess City Council meeting to a meeting of the Manhattan Beach Capital Improvement Corporation. I'm going to call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Board Member Holworth?
Here.
Board Member Lesser?
Here.
Board Member Napolit-- oh, President Napolitano.
Ooh, I like the-- All right, here.
Board Member Franklin?
Here.
Vice President Montgomery?
I am here as well.
And public comment on the Capital Improvement Corporation. Do we have any public comments on the Capital Improvement Corporation? Only just Capital Improvement Corporation. Seeing none here live, how about Zoom?
How about it?
No, I won't say that. All right, we'll close public comment and we're going to talk general business. Item four, organization of the Manhattan Beach Capital Improvement Corporation. We have to elect a new president and new vice president. So I'm looking for nomination. Oh, I see one.
I nominate, what's his name? Our Honorable Mayor, Richard Montgomery, to be our president.
A motion by Councilmember David Lesser and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin. Any council comments? Seeing none voting screen?
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you all. And now item H, we'll adjourn the Manhattan Beach Capital Improvement Corporation.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, we need a motion for the vice--
I'm sorry, need a vice chair.
I did press my button. I nominate MPT Franklin.
And I second the motion to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin as a vice president.
Motion passes five zero.
There you go. Now, so now you have a good job, ready to go. With that, we'll adjourn the Manhattan Beach Capital Improvement Corporation and reconvene City Council meeting. We'll go to item I ceremonial calendar. I don't believe we have any ceremonial tonight. That part is over. Move to item J, City Council Committee Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events. One minute per person. People, this is one minute if you want to talk now or you can talk three minutes later, up to you.
Hello. Hi, I'm Taylor Ryan and I'm here with my Leadership Manhattan Beach colleagues Tiffany, Barbara, and Carol Patterson to announce this year's project initiative dedicated to building a nutrition pantry for single, for the Single Mom Project. Our goal is to expand the reach of the Single Mom Project and enable it to feed 50 single-parent families weekly, doubling the number of families currently served. To accomplish this goal, LMB 2023 will transform a room at Richstone Center into a nutrition pantry. We are partnering with Trader Joe's to provide nutritional food items, fresh vegetables, fruit, protein, non-perishable food, and staples. We need your help to make this project a reality. Our community has always been known for coming together to support one another, and we believe that we can make a meaningful difference in the lives of these families. Please consider making a donation of any amount by March 30th, 2023 by visiting our website, www. leadershipmb.org. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, Taylor. Thank you, Leadership. Our next speaker?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 22nd, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., we will be celebrating Teens Create Month with a very special clay forming program. Celebrate Teens Create Month by using your creativity and imagination to design something cool using modeling clay. Learn about library resources you can use to discover the history of clay and its many uses. This is for grades six to 12, and because supplies are limited, advanced registration is required through our website, lacountylibrary.org. Adults are invited, excuse me, to participate in the book club on Monday, April 3rd, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Bibliophiles can join us for a facilitated discussion of fiction and nonfiction titles. A limited amount of titles are available for book club attendees at the library. And April's book is The Marriage Portrait by Maggie O'Farrell, and this is for adults. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh, coming out in this dark and stormy night. Our next speaker? No one else here in chambers? How about Zoom, Martha? David Archer, all right?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery and outgoing Mayor Napolitano and Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin. I hope I didn't miss anybody. I'm David Archer, Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank outgoing Mayor Napolitano for his wonderful speech, or video, I guess it is, at our State of the City last Thursday, for Bruce Mo for coming on and updating on the city, Chief Johnson for updating on police, and Dr. Bose for updating on the school district. We had a terrific time. I also wanted to give a shout out to Jessica Vincent to help, who helped pull the video together, and Assistant to the City Manager George Gabriel for all he does. And then lastly, my Leadership Manhattan Beach classmates who did an awesome presentation about two people before me. So thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you, David. Anybody else on Zoom? And we'll close public comment. Move on to our next item.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Yes.
Make a statement, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Thank you so much. So this is not a coup. It's not a takeover of the mayor's position. However, I have in my possession a mayor-for-a-day certificate signed by you, provided by you in 2021. And I've been holding on to it. Now, this is, as we know, Mayor Montgomery is involved in a lot of different charities, and so I was happy to buy this. I wasn't on the council then, but anytime you feel I can be mayor for the day, I'll turn that in. Thank you for your--
This is the copy original.
That's the original. We're on the film.
Where's our shredder? Thank you, Joe. Madeline, anybody else coming down to speak? Anybody else? I'm sorry. We're going to have public comments next. You're holding for that? This way you can talk for three minutes on any item on agenda. You can bring it up tonight, so please come down and--
Can I come up next?
Yes. No, no, go ahead.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Tiffany Barbara, a 20-year resident here, and I want to thank you all for your service. Councilmember Napolitano, you've always been a voice of reason, very thoughtful, and just very reasonable in the way you approach things, and I just wanted to thank you for your service. And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, congratulations on progressing to that spot. We're really excited to see what's going to happen there. And you've always been a friend to us and very helpful and pro children and students in the city. And then Mayor Montgomery, these are for you. I didn't bring booze this time, but I did bring you some highballs because I thought you might need those. But anyway, I want to, I want to thank you, Mayor Montgomery, for all that you did for Kids Need Classrooms last year. Your relationship with Janice Hahn was really critical in getting us a voice. Our voice is heard by her. She was really instrumental in getting the LA County to open schools after the Christmas break, and she was also great at putting a little pressure on our own little school district here to get classrooms open to the high-needs hybrid kids that could be back October of 2020. And I also want to thank you, because my son is Joe Barbara, he's listening right now, and he's at El Camino College, which is a fantastic program, and he is a political science major and, believe it or not, wants to get into politics. So thank you, Mayor Montgomery. He spent about 30 to 40 minutes on the phone with my son for his report, and he wrote a report about Mayor Montgomery's experience on City Council here in Manhattan Beach. And you had such great positive things to say to him about his career and his school life. And he would like that certificate to become mayor of the day. He just sent me a text. But I just want to say thank you for that. And here you go.
You could give it to the clerk right there. You could give it to the city clerk. That'd be great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Until Joe, Joe, any time, give me a call.
Former Mayor Montgomery, Mayor Napolitano, be the first to say, thank you for your leadership, your rationale. I think Councilwoman Holworth said it. The number of times this community's been divided over the last several years, it's painful to watch as a resident, and again and again and again I watch you make decisions that were in the best interests of the community. Didn't always agree. I think on more than once or one or two emails, I sent you and said, hey, I don't agree, but your rationale and your logic behind your decision is in the best interests of the community. May not be exactly the way I would believe, but it is in the best interests of the community. And Mayor Montgomery, your just decisiveness, no nonsense, let's do it, let's get it done. I think that was a real quality of character during when we went into the pandemic where we didn't have time to figure out emotions or whatever. Look, this is what we needed to do. We needed to make decisions, and I look forward to coming back together. I think this, this, this body will work, has and will work well together. I think there's a real balance. Mayor Montgomery, you indicated just civil discourse. Let's have normal dialogue in, in council chambers. We're not yelling at each other. We don't need different agendas and whatever. Let's figure out what's in the best interest of the community, and I'm just grateful to be part of this. Steve, I remember when you were elected mayor the first time. And yeah, but we're here and I appreciate you all. I mean, everyone has been, been a friend to me, a friend to my family. I know, again, Mayor Montgomery, you've reached out a number of times with my daughter and certain things, all of you have. But anyway, thank you very much. I look forward to this, and Steve, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker?
Good evening, I'm Madeline Kaplan, and I came down to say thank you, now Councilmember Napolitano, for, for representing our city and choosing to make that sacrifice. And I have found your leadership to be so consistent in that you lead with experience and integrity and class. And it's, it's just so appreciated. And especially last weekend was a really moving to hear your words. It's not that they were new to me, that the city should take responsibility for racist actions in the past. It's just that it was so hard for so many people to say, and yet you said it, and it really resonated with, with me and with my family and with so many people. They're talking about what you said, and it's, it's a positive, positive contribution to the dialogue in this community, especially as we're dealing with issues of race and racism in our schools and in our community, and children not knowing the importance of taking responsibility for the words that you say. And you did that last weekend, and I'm just so grateful. So thank you for your service, and, and also I look forward to-- Mayor Montgomery, you have always served our city with just your get-it-done attitude, and I, I saw that before when, when I was Cub Scout leader of Meadows PAC 275 and our Memorial Day salute was canceled because of COVID, and you brought the fire department, the police to our street, and we were able to do a Cub Scout memorial service COVID-style. And it was just thoughtful, and it was imaginative, and it was respectful, and it honored our servicemen. My, you know, it's just, we'll always remember it, and it's just, we're looking forward to your term. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madeline.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. I came here to compliment you on your excellent choice for sweaters, the Argyle sweaters. But seriously, I wanted to compliment now former Mayor Napolitano for your exemplary term as mayor. Actually, not just now, but six times. You know, our community really appreciated the effort that you gave the community. As a former two-term mayor, I know what it takes and what you have to go through, so kudos to you, and I know you'll do well, you know, as a regular council member now. Also, I want to congratulate now Mayor Montgomery. I know you will do a good term, have a great term as well, and I want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Franklin. I know that you will be excellent mayor pro tem and then mayor. And actually, I want to commend the entire council. I've seen you work well as a team. You've done a lot of great things for our community, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker? Anyone else here in the chambers speak? How about Zoom, Martha? No one's on Zoom? Nobody's answered. All right.
Hi, I just wanted to, once again, bring up that our, what's it called? Police Department is just an excellent police department, and they really do need a mat room. They are spending their own time and money to go outside to train for, you know, in jujitsu style so that they can be safe, so that they can have, you know, safety when they're doing, when they're making these arrests. They are so close to very dangerous suspects, and so I really applaud them for what they do every day, and I think they are very deserving of a much-needed mat room and simulation room so that we can be, you know, the best department that we can be and have our officers' backs. So I would love to get that rolling somehow. Another thing that I wanted to comment on was I wanted to thank you, Mayor Montgomery, because it was during your term as mayor during COVID when you did these Coffee with the Mayors, and that's actually how I started to become more involved, because it was such a, what is it called? Like a very easy way to, you know, just talk, ask questions, and I really appreciated that. I asked tons of questions and you answered them all. So I'm glad that you are bringing that back, to have that discourse with the citizens here, and, you know, so I thought that was a great feature, and I can't wait to, to do the Coffee with the Mayors again. I also want to thank Stephen Napolitano. I think, you know, it's not easy being mayor of a town with, you know, more than just two opinions. There's a lot of opinions out here, and yet, I mean, we agree sometimes, we don't agree other times, but that's just how it is. But I really think we also should discuss term limits. I mean, it's just, it's a lot of Mayor Napolitano, it's a lot of Mayor Montgomery, it's a lot of, you know, other mayors. So it would be great to have that as a discussion so we can have a lot more, you know, diverse opinions out there representing us, and, but I do thank you all for your service. I think you have each brought something really unique to Manhattan Beach. But term limits definitely something that we need to probably discuss as a city, and gosh, I have one more thing, but I can't remember, but I'll probably ask you at the Coffee with the Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Martha? All right.
Hi, my name's James Franklin. Just calling from North Carolina to congratulate my dad.
Jimmy, we're looking good, man.
It's cool seeing this. But that's all I got.
Hey, Jimmy, we all say thank you for your service. Think your dad wants to say something. Mayor Pro Tem?
Is that, is that all?
Hey, come on now, since many times kids are asleep.
My grandchildren. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy. Take care of yourself.
Yes, sure, you'll too.
Appreciate it.
That was a nice surprise. Anyone else via Zoom? All right, this time we'll close public comment. We'll move to consent calendar, item I. Items three through eight, do I have a motion? See a motion by Councilmember Holworth and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Mayor, I'll read the title of ordinance number 23-0007, which is item six on the consent calendar. An ordinance of the City of Manhattan Beach amending section 8.2002 of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code to increase the rate of the city's transient occupancy tax to 14% in accordance with Measure A adopted by the Manhattan Beach electorate in 2019.
So noted. Voting screen, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item M, there are no items removed in the consent calendar. We'll move to item H, public hearings. There are none. We move to item O, general business, and the first one is item nine, consideration of resolution to initiate the Prop 218 process to consider increasing wastewater rate fees and adopt procedures in connection with the proposed wastewater fee increase. Mayor and Public Works Director Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm pleased to hand this presentation off to Senior Management Analyst Nikki Petroff, who will be giving the presentation for you. We also have our consultant from Black and Beach as well.
All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. How are you guys?
Good.
My name is Nikki, and I am part of the Public Works Department, and I'm here to present this wastewater rate introduction for you guys. So let's start here. For an introduction, I just wanted to be clear that these rates have not been increased in over nine years. So the city hired Black and Beach to conduct a rate analysis, and they determined that the city needs a 45% revenue increase over the next five years. Customer bills are currently funding the city's operating costs, capital costs, debt service, and other, other costs that relate to the function of the city, our infrastructure and keeping it in good condition. The fund itself is, it is an enterprise fund and is not subsidized by general fund taxes. These rates need to be adjusted because while the nation, nationwide costs continue to climb, the city has not increased its rates since 2014. During that time, cost of materials have gone up, cost of food has gone up, cost of all items have gone up. So this is the time for the city to go ahead and do this increase. The proposed rate adjustments are 45%, and it is 45% increase in revenue over the next five years. The way that this was projected was a way to make sure that we operate under the reserve target and keep a balanced fund. In this slide, we have the local wastewater rate comparison, and you can see here how the City of Manhattan Beach plays out. The bill impacts, I think, is the biggest question, and the way that the typical single-family residential customer, they will see an increase of $5.49 on their bi-monthly bill. These rates are proposed to be effective November 1st, 2023, with rates reflective on bills on January 1st, 2024. Currently, the financial inflationary assumptions, staff worked with the consultants to ensure that the proposed rates will cover our anticipated cost increase based on the factors listed here. This also put in, took into consideration what our operations and maintenance expenses are going to be over the next five years. That includes salaries, debt service. Also, our capital expenses. So in the capital expenses, we looked through the next five years, what it would take to put together our collection system, lift stations, and then our general wastewater system assets. So the, to actually implement these new fees, the city would have to initiate the Prop 218 process. This process requires that we mail notices to property owners. The city will also mail them to rate payers as a courtesy. We are giving a 40, we're required to provide a 45-day protest period and hold a public hearing after that protest period. The timeline is listed here, the way that it stands today, if the Prop 218 process is initiated, May 16th is the hearing date that we're looking for. We plan to postmark the notices on March 28th. We will hold a community meeting on April 19th. It'll be in person and Zoom, where any questions that the public has, we will be happy to address. Again, the May 16th hearing, November 1st is going to be the date that we are looking to have the new rates go to in effect, assuming that there is, the protest count is sufficient, and January 1st is when the new wastewater rates would be reflective in customer bills. So in conclusion, our recommendation is a 45% increase in revenue over the next five years, and staff request directions in the following. Adopt Resolution 23-0029, initiating the Proposition 218 process, and setting a date and time for the public hearing. We recommend May 16th, 2023. Adopting Resolution 23-0030 regarding procedures in connection with the proposed wastewater fee increases. Any questions?
Council questions? They're straightforward. Thank you very much. Don't go over--
Actually, I just have one, please, Mayor. So you say that if protest count is less than 50% plus one on the November 1st row here, 50% plus one of what?
Of the total count in the residents. So if the City of Manhattan Beach has, you know, 14,000 residents--
Okay.
Then that would be, if we get 50 plus one, then it would be considered a protest.
I, I just wanted to make that clear for myself, and I'm sure some others--
Of course. Yeah, that's a great question.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Other questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Counsel? Thank you. Stand by. Any public comment? Anyone here in the chambers, public comment?
Can you just, for, for those of us who may not be aware, can you just explain the 218 process? Because it's not like we're going to actually vote and we're voting for it. It's a mailer that goes out to the property owner, and if we don't protest, so if you send out 1,000 and you don't get 501, then the rate goes into effect. Can you just explain that maybe to the members of the public?
Yes, when we're all done.
When you get a chance, thank you.
When we're all done. When we're all done. When we're all done, we'll come back. Anyone else here in chambers have a question? How about on Zoom? All right.
My comment is just that 43% over five years seems like it's, it's a big increase, especially with the recession that we're projected to be in. So I would ask that council lady, maybe think about doing something a little bit more conservatively and increase it in a less painful way for us, for our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? What else? All right, we'll close public comment part. Would you like to come back there and then talk about the Prop 218 process, or would you rather have? All right.
Mayor, I could address that. The way the Prop 218 process works is we have to have 50% of eligible protest ballots submitted plus one. If that does happen, then the council cannot enact the rate increase. If we have less than that threshold, then the council has ability to enact that rate increase at the public hearing on May 16th.
For clarity's sake, the protest vote is an opposition vote to the motion.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I pressed my--
Councilwoman Holworth, thank you for pushing the button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging. Hello, Director Lee. So again, to clarify, because I just want to make sure everybody understands, is the 50 plus one the amount of votes that are turned in or the, the number of households? Because I think that's the, it appears to be--
So it would be property owners. So 50% of the, of the parcels that receive service in Manhattan Beach, plus one--
Right.
Would have to protest the proposed rate increases.
Oh, it is? Okay.
And in that case, the council, no matter how much you want to impose that increase, you could not do that.
So it, and, and, and you're only mailing in a vote if you're protesting?
Correct.
That's right. Got it?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
And it's, and it's just a one, one person per household?
It's, it's one protest per parcel.
Per parcel.
And, and to be clear, there is no ballot. We're going to send a notice to all the, the property owners and rate payers in town and inform them on how to protest. We accept those in writing, through the mail, through the clerk's office. It'll all be explained.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Thank you, Director Lee. We'll close from there. Council colleagues? Would you like to go first? Or second? Would you like to go first or second? Counselor Lesser?
Someone has to start. I think to the question raised by the caller, I'd simply say this: Our cost to perform services as a city have to be offset. Otherwise, eventually, the city is underwriting the costs of such basic services that ultimately it's going to have to taper back in other services that the city provides. So no one likes to move forward with raising wastewater fees, but on the other hand, we have to do it. And we've gone through a process which has involved engaging an outside firm to analyze our costs and then to advise us on how to do the wastewater rate increase properly, and that's what's before us today, and that's why I'll be in support of this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Lesser. Who else wanted to go second? Let's see. It was... Mayor Tim Franklin.
Did I beat you? So even before I got on council, I learned about stormwater and this process. And I've actually looked at some of the stormwater facilities, taken a tour of it. It's very important, and how apropos with these atmospheric rivers that we have coming our way. Right now, I imagine the streets and the gutters are pretty clean, but that's not always the case. And the sweepers don't get every piece of debris and harmful material that might just get washed down to the ocean. So it's a very important thing to consider. It hasn't been raised in nine years. Think back to what things cost nine years ago and what they cost today. So I would be in support of this for the benefit of the city and the environment.
If I can make a clarification, we're talking about wastewater. Stormwater is another example of something that we're underwriting. Then if we don't raise rates, we'll end up in the same position. But this is basically the sewer.
Yeah, the sewers.
Yes, thank you.
Even better.
Counselor Napolitano?
Flush without fear.
There you go.
No, and both the previous speakers, Counselor Lesser and MPT Franklin, are correct. And, you know, nobody here wants to raise fees or taxes. Nobody here wants to do that. But all these services cost money, and the cost of these services have increased a lot over time. And there's no yearly increase built into the fees that we charge for these things. And, you know, we're running a $2 million deficit right now in the stormwater fund, or close to that, and it's only growing. And that's going to have to be looked at. And this is another one of those, the sewer, and the same thing with our landscape and street lighting fees. They're all way behind because when they were adopted, nobody put CPI increases in because that was before 218, a lot of these fees. And so, you know, we need to keep up with our costs, too. Staff costs have increased, materials have increased, consultants have increased. Everything's increased. And to think that, you know, these costs are not going to have to be increased along with those things is just unrealistic. It's a fact of life. None of us like it. But to keep things running and to keep all those invisible services that we rely on to work invisibly and not worry about them, not think about sewers backing out, not think about storm drains backing out, not think about streetlights going out, we unfortunately are going to have to address these things. They've been sitting here for years, and they're being subsidized right now by the general fund, which could be going for more police, which could be going for more fire. But instead, they're going for stormwater and sewer and other things. And so for everyone who wants more police, we have to pay for them. And this is one of the ways to do it. And the next item regarding the hotel transient occupancy tax is another one along those lines. This is just the cost of doing business as a city. Nobody likes it, but it's necessary, and it's a fact. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Howard?
I just wanted to say I've made a motion unless you'd like to make a comment.
You're doing fine.
Thank you, sir. You know, with respect to everything my colleagues have said, I mean, I think you've said it all. So my motion is to approve consideration or to approve a resolution... Nope, that's it up here. To initiate, I want to make a motion to initiate the Prop 218 process to consider increasing wastewater rate fees and adopt procedures in connection with proposed wastewater fee, period. This is, I think, a necessary step. So thank you.
Just to clarify, which you adopt, both resolutions?
Oh, yeah. I'm so sorry. Adopt resolution. My motion includes adopting resolution numbers 23-0029 and 23-0030.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Amy Howard, and a second by Mayor Tim Joe Franklin. Comments? Roll call, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you all. Our next item, number 10, City Attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is the consideration of extending the city manager's contract and increasing his compensation 10% in recognition of COVID and sensitivity to salary increases. The city manager has not requested a merit increase since 2019. And so at this time, he's asking for more money. The city council, in closed session, directed the city attorney to draft this amendment that gives him a three-year extension to his existing contract and increases his salary. And the number, which will have to be repeated by the mayor, is his annual salary will be $308,165.4. Now pursuant to the Brown Act, there were changes made to the Brown Act a few years ago, and the mayor needs to inform the public the term and the compensation.
Perfect. In doing so, I'll point out that this extends the term of the city manager to February 5th, that's 5, 2027, and increases the yearly base salary to 308,165,04. That's what we're discussing in here tonight. Any council comments or questions? Counselor Lesser?
I'll just simply say, it was very interesting being off council and observe the operations of the city while not being an elected official and appreciate the role of the city manager even more. I think most members of the public don't realize that the city council employs two people, employ the city attorney, and we employ the city manager who employs and oversees everyone else. And with the extraordinary circumstances of the pandemic, seeking to keep the city running, all of the meetings, all of the interactions trying to do so remotely was really remarkable to watch. And I felt very proud and pleased to live in this city because of its leadership, leadership on council, leadership with our city manager, and to realize that there had been no merit increase since 2019 has caused me to support this. We've looked at other cities as well, and I'll be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Napolitano? Mayor? I'm sorry?
Yeah. Well, that's what I was going to say. I don't mean to undercut what Counselor Lesser just said, which I agree with, but I'm going to save my comments until after public participation.
Thank you.
So are there comments? Public comment? Anyone here in the audience saying, any comments on Zoom? Okay. Welcome iPad. Okay.
Excuse me if the information is somewhere else, but I'm not understanding what the original term was and what the salary is increased into. I do appreciate the amount of work it takes to be city manager, to oversee the entire city. While my memory is not as good right now, I can't think of the exact example, but I remember during the pandemic, it was possibly in regards to everyone had to stay home, and somebody went into Polylog and got like a $1,000 ticket or something. And even though council had approved the action of, you know, ticketing people or whatever it was, once city council signed off on it, it was up to the city manager and staff to come up with all the fine print, as they say. And then that ended up being something really not in the spirit of what council had wanted. And so that example really rubbed a lot of people the wrong way. And, you know, council has to be careful when you sign any document to read the fine print. And if Bruce Mo and his staff are the fine print, then we have to make sure that everybody is really in alignment in, what's it called, executing what you guys actually want to have done. So I just think that's a crazy high number, but then what do I know? What's a normal pay for a city manager? But it would be great if we can have that information or if you can direct me to where it is so I can actually see the increase amount. Thank you.
Other callers on Zoom?
We can try the other user. It's cold hard.
All right. All right, we'll close public comment and move to council discussions. And for the record, all-star doctor mayor's prerogative here. The caller mentioned the information. It's actually on page 125 of 147, both the term, original term, which expires February 5th, 2024, and the amount of the increase is stated clearly on paragraph three and paragraph bottom of paragraph four. That's on page 125 of 147, the staff report. Another comment made about the fines that we asked city manager to do in 2020, I can tell you that former Mayor Napolitano and I, that were there in 2020 during COVID, we directed it clearly to follow the rules the county and state had put in place. And they were following with our instructions to the letter. So whatever fines were incurred by the people that actually didn't want to follow the rules, they were well-defined in advance, and those are paid to understand that now. So nothing was city manager to do that we didn't ask him to do. Council comments? I'm sorry. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I mentioned in my comments when I, you know, was appointed Mayor Pro Tem about how much I've learned these past couple of years and how much I'm going to put that hopefully to good use. And a great deal of that learning experience was with Bruce Mo, our city manager. I found Bruce to be fair, balanced, you know, mildly correcting my errors, you know, like we saw today. So people, please do not urinate in the gutters, okay? We have to make sure the water stream gets in the correct spot. But it's very helpful. I mean, it's basically on-the-job training for any new council member. I come from the business sector. Things are done much differently. And you could become a bull in a china shop if you're trying to work with city staff and, you know, fellow council members and things like that. So he's been there. He's been stalwart. Also, it's just I've been very impressed with his commitment. I came in during the lockdown phase, and I just have to whine that, you know, again, I was the only council member of anyone that's been in those pictures or here that has not been sworn in in these chambers. I was in my kitchen in my boxer shorts. No. I did have my suit and tie on, but I took the oath in my kitchen. But that shows the challenge. I mean, that was an amazing challenge. Everybody was. And with an easy and swift and smooth transition, you know, the city manager and the people for whom he's responsible made that change. So I just want to mention that and also express my appreciation for hopefully I've been a good student.
All right. Is that your motion, sir? Oh, never mind. All right. Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you, Your Honor. And yes, I echo everything that Counselor Franklin, or Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, sorry, just said, and so much more. I said we have the best staff anywhere, and it starts at the top. And there was a reason why many of us dyes right now asked Bruce to take over for city manager several years ago, and he's done an incredible job since then. I will disagree with anyone who says otherwise. They just don't know. They don't know what they're talking about. I'm sorry. You just don't. You know, he does his best to follow the directions of council, which are clear as mud sometimes. And so, you know, if mistakes get made along the way, it's more a reflection of us than him or city staff. And when things do go wrong, invariably something will always go wrong, he cleans it up. He fixes it. Doesn't blame others. He takes responsibility and fixes it. What more do you want from a city manager? And still, he gives more integrity, bleeds Manhattan Beach, dedicated. He's a longtime employee here, not just a city manager. So institutional knowledge means a lot, too. And, you know, he's just been so good in so many ways for this city. I do believe he's the best city manager that we've had. I also want to say that, you know, this is a bargain. And put your earmuffs on, Bruce, because, you know, we're increasing, it seems like a 10% increase. It's less than the cost of inflation for the time that he hasn't been given a raise. So we're bringing him up to still below par in terms of salary, because there are lots of city managers making a lot more, but none of them are doing a better job than he is. So he's a bargain. He's worth it, and he's done incredible jobs. So I appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, your comments.
And I move to approve.
Counselor Howard?
Yes, just a few additional comments. I agree completely with everything that's been said. And I was on the council when we asked Bruce to step up. And for all the reasons that Steve mentioned, you know, the fact that he lives and breathes Manhattan Beach and has all this integrity, those were the reasons we wanted you to take this position then. And all I can say is somehow you're even better now than you were then. And that is really something that I value, someone who is willing to change and grow, looking, you know, outside their comfort zone. It would be really easy for you to rest. Well, not rest. Anyone in city government knows there's no rest. But you could sit, you know, you could sit on your laurels, let's say that. And I really don't think that you have. And that has been so incredibly great to see. And as a resident, I so appreciate it. And as a council member, I see it and want to honor that. So thank you, Bruce, for everything you've done. And I've seconded the motion.
Thank you. A motion by Counselor Napolitano, a second by Counselor Howard. Seeing no further comments?
That's to a top. Resolution 23-0031.
There you go.
Let's see. Let's see. Okay.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm so humbled. Thank you for all the kind comments. You're right, we have the best staff in the world sitting here, and they make everything happen. But I am so humbled by all the kind comments and the fact that I can continue my career here with the city of Manhattan Beach, which, you know, means so much to me. And I really appreciate all the trust you've given in me, and I promise never to let you down. So thank you so much.
Well-earned, and you're welcome. All right, we're going to move to item P. City council requests and reports, including AB 1224 reports. Do we have any? Seeing none, we're going to move to item Q. Future agenda items with Counselor...
I didn't want to withdraw. I wanted to speak.
Counselor Lesser, then Counselor Howard.
Which item are you... Q?
Q.
For future agenda items, I was going to propose that the council revisit the issue of an apology related to Bruce's beach. And in connection with that, I'd like to bring back the 2021 alternative motion by Councilmember Napolitano in substance and effect.
I would support that. That was going to be my request.
So you have two in favor, Counselor Lesser, Counselor Howard. Any other comments?
I have one question for the city attorney, with permission, and that is, does this require a two-step or a three-step, Mr. City Attorney?
So this has been discussed a number of different times. And if you're going with the resolution or something substantially consistent with the resolution that's already been drafted, it won't require any staff time, right? So this could be two steps. You could put a resolution on the next agenda.
I would be in favor of doing so.
I would support that.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, a question. Do you still would like us to discuss this at a closed session, or is this open?
If the council wants to schedule a closed session before the next council meeting, we could do that.
Understood. Any other council comments, questions?
I agree.
Let's see. Any other council requests of future agenda items?
How often do we have to wear the Argyle sweaters?
45 minutes. Move to city manager report, then.
Yes, something very brief. In the interest of time here, I just want to thank Mayor Napolitano for our Monday morning meetings. They were always interesting, fun-filled, and I learned a lot, and it set the tone for the week, so often very, very helpful. And I'll miss those. I know we're moving to Monday afternoons now, so I'll save my banter for that time. And congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to working with you, as the staff does, once again, in working for the community. And Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. We'll continue to work together and get you set up for your turn as, as mayor in nine and a half months here. So thank you, and congratulations.
You. City Attorney report.
Very similar. Congratulations to the new mayor and the new mayor pro tem.
You.
Looking forward to working with you for the next, is it now eight months again? Eight or nine months? Nine and a half, nine and a half months.
Who's counting?
Thank you, sir. Information items in our book, agenda forecast is in our book, closed session on tonight. With that, we will adjourn to April 4, 2024, I'm sorry, 23, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Any else, any other to discuss?
Mayor, why don't we just go ahead and schedule it for a closed session at 5:00?
Okay, so we'll revise that.
On the 4th, just in case.
We're going to hold 5:00 PM closed session for April 4, 2023, at council chambers. And thank you all for coming tonight. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Great meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Good job.
You're doing.